Is Idaho Falls getting too full? In this video, I'm going to interview Forrest Eiler with Planning and Zoning with the City of Idaho Falls and talk about the pros and cons of Idaho Falls, but then also about the growth. What developments are coming to town? What isn't here, what won't come here? And things like that. So I'm super excited for this interview. So without further ado, let's get started. Forrest, thank you so much for being here.
Absolutely. I'm happy to be here.
I'm so excited. So Forrest actually is a plethora of knowledge. He knows so much about so much.
I call it just a surface level. Knowledge about so many random things.
I love it. Anything, any question I have, I usually go to Forrest. So Forrest is on my team, the Anderson Hicks Group, and he's also on the Planning and Zoning Committee?
Commission.
Commission. Okay. And so first we'll talk about you. Tell me a little bit about you. How long have you been in Idaho? Why are you here and why do you stay here?
You know, I was born in Yuma, Arizona, but my family, my dad's family is from East Idaho. And we actually moved to Rigby when I was younger. And then when I was in high school, I moved up to, or family moved down here to Idaho Falls, just when I was like 13 and went to high school here, been here ever since. And never really had a reason to leave. Everything that I needed was here. Yeah, I just, you know, the city's continually growing at a steady pace. And I felt like there was still opportunity to be had here. I didn't feel like I had to, had to leave per se. And it also helps too that my family's here and then I met my wife here. Her family's here. So it just was also just convenient to just be here as well. So.
Okay. So this is like a real honest question. If your family was here, your, your wife's family wasn't here, would you still pick Idaho?
Like if we had no family here at all? I've never been asked that question before. I've never even thought about that. But I think there'd still be a pretty good chance that I'd still be here. Just because I do love it here. I'm not really tied to this area emotionally because of my family. I'm, I'm tied to this area because I just, I just love it. So.
What are some things that you love about Idaho Falls?
What I love is purely just its proximity to just world-class recreation. I mean, we're only an hour and a half from Jackson. Really only an hour from the Teton Valley where you can see the Tetons and you're still in Idaho. We call it the Idaho side of the Tetons. And then you're only, you know, an hour and a half, two hours to Yellowstone National Park. And Island Park. And then you also have all the great recreation outside of that. But also that, what I love about Idaho Falls specifically is it's generally more affordable. If you were to compare it to other large, you know, mountain style towns compared to like Bozeman or definitely compared to like Park City or then you have like Cody, Wyoming, but it's way smaller. And so I think it's a like, it's, it's a nice in-between for sure. We don't have crazy big mountains next to Idaho Falls, that's for sure, like some of these other places. But it's proximity and it's affordability. I really do like, so.
I like that. And that's a huge, that's a big common reason why people come to Idaho Falls. And I have made so many videos about the pros and cons of East Idaho. But what are your personal pros and cons, be completely honest about living in East Idaho?
Well, for sure, pros would be access to great recreation, either close, just the foothills or whatever, or out in the desert, just west of here. And when I say desert, it's like the, we call it the Arco Desert. It still snows and it's still really cold out there, but it's just really flat and sagebrush and lava, rock, and I still find it beautiful out there. That's really close, or all the other stuff that I mentioned. And that's not even including all the stuff in central Idaho, like the Sawtooth and everything, which I go over to quite frequently. But besides that, I also really like its low-key vibe. Because it's not one of these like on-the-map mountain towns. We're not, it doesn't feel like it's a change or it's a town rapidly changing. Because Idaho Falls's roots are agricultural. And we still have lots of farms, lots of ranches outside of Idaho Falls. And East Idaho in general is a very agricultural area. However, Idaho Falls, we do have the site and new medical jobs. And so there's a lot of white collar jobs bringing in people from all over the country. And so I think it's a really nice mix of people that we see here. But I think cons, we're getting better. But when it comes to some like nicer shopping, let's say you're really into nicer clothes or nicer experiences, Idaho Falls doesn't really have much of that. Or even East Idaho in general, doesn't really have any much of that. I would also say the food options are definitely getting better for sure. We're getting more and more restaurants, bringing in a variety of things. But we're definitely not a metropolitan by all means, whereas you've got loads and loads of, how do I say, options. Pretty much in the winter time and summertime, if you like the outdoors and being outside, then you'll love it here. But if you don't really care for that stuff, then there's not much going on. I mean, we still have a great, the downtown is getting better. More and more events are going on down there. In fact, Idaho Falls, we have Beer Fest here every June. And it's actually one of the best in the entire region. People come from Utah, Montana, Wyoming, like people to go to be there, not to be a vendor there, but they travel from all over because we have one of the best beer fest. So I mean, that's just one example of us getting better. We have the Mountain America Center, so we're starting to see more concerts and stuff. So it's definitely getting better, but if you still want good entertainment, that's not snowmobiling or skiing or being outside or whatever. You might still have to go to Salt Lake or Boise.
Okay. And how do you feel about the snow?
I personally don't mind it. Here's my weird philosophy is a lot of people really just don't like cold. But when they see snow, they're like, oh, no, I don't want that. I, if it's gonna be cold, which it's going to be in Idaho Falls, hands down, I would rather there be snow on the ground. So it's at least, so it at least is pretty. Because, and in Idaho Falls, fortunately, most of the time in the winter, when it does snow, it then just stays on the ground and then it continues to accumulate over the winter. So we're not looking at ugly brown dead things and mud all most of the winter. I like the snow for that reason, because it's gonna be cold regardless. So might as well let there be, let there be snow.
I agree. When it snows, it kind of like, you know, like it freezes to the branches and it crystallizes. And then it's so pretty. You go to the river and everything's frozen.
Absolutely.
I love that part.
You get a lot of days like that for sure. And then, yeah, it just slowly accumulates over time. And at least it looks like winter, you know? It's not just depressing, muddy and dirty and cold.
What about the, the culture here? You know, a lot of people come here from out of state and they say, wow, Idahoans are so nice. It's also, we're all kind of, you know, look the same, vote the same type of, you know, like Idaho's like that. But what do you personally think about the culture?
Culture-wise, I think if you go looking for it, I think you might find it, a niche of something that you might enjoy. You know, obviously, East Idaho is predominantly white and predominantly Christian, right? Especially LDS. But we're definitely starting to see a lot more other Christian faiths really starting to gain traction. And it's not just predominantly LDS. And I think what you're seeing now, especially in Idaho Falls and Pocatello is the LDS culture isn't as influential in just normal business or normal life. Like you don't feel its presence as much. As someone who grew up here, I'm feeling it less and less. Like if you're going to like Utah or something where it's just like, you feel the LDS faith in almost everything. Like culture-wise, events-wise, whatever, you just can feel it. Here, it's more of a live and let live type of feeling. And it's a more laid back feeling. So culturally, I think we see a little bit of that. And then also Idaho Falls, again, with more out-of-staters, you know, for the INL and medical jobs and stuff, we're starting to see a little bit of diversity there.
I completely agree. I, cause I lived in Utah and it, it's a different culture here. If people are just really accepting and just, I don't know, like, like cool, you believe that, I believe this. Let's live our lives.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. What's up, guys? I just want to interrupt this video real quick because right in the middle of this interview, the camera completely died. So we lost half of this amazing interview with Forrest Eiler. But if you hold on here, I did finish the interview the very next day. So we are wearing totally different clothes, totally different lighting, totally different time of day. But the material is still super good. So keep listening. Cause we're just getting started on, on all about the future of Idaho Falls. Okay. So we talked about you.
Yep.
And the pros and cons of Idaho Falls.
Yes.
So now let's get to the meat of this interview.
Yeah, absolutely.
And what is going on in Idaho Falls? What is the future of Idaho Falls?
A lot of people think or might have the worry like, oh, is Idaho Falls turning, gonna, or East Idaho gonna turn into the next, you know, Salt Lake City or Southern California or whatever? And I just kind of wanted to put one thing in perspective that the city or the Idaho Falls metro area, which also includes Rigby, is about 175,000 people. Okay. Which is not just Idaho Falls, which is like a bigger, broader area, right? With some country in between. Ontario, California is 185,000 people. And that's just one city and of a big, larger metro. And there, it's the 25th largest city in California. Idaho Falls and Idaho Falls Metro is the largest metro, metro outside of the Boise Metro. And Idaho Falls is the largest city outside of that area. So to put into perspective of how less, how much less population there is, that's like, just to put that into perspective.
Sure.
You know what I'm saying? So to get to that point would, something incredible would have to happen where we all had really amazing weather, you know? Or something, you know? And that's just not gonna happen. And so the idea that Idaho Falls is gonna become this big metropolis, that's very, very far away if that does even happen. Now Idaho Falls's growth rate is, I think at 1.2, 1.5% a year, which is a very healthy amount. You see cities where they're in the 2%, 3% and that's where it's like, they're really struggling to manage growth. But Idaho Falls is about 1.2, 1.5, I think. So, and our, and our current population is about 69,000. So I think, and this is all kind of anecdotal, but this is something that I've seen a little bit, especially being in the commercial real estate world. I've kind of dealt with that a little bit. That when you have these companies or these big brands or big, you know, like your In-N-Outs, your Raising Canes, which we are getting. We, they tend to look at an area and they're like, okay, how much population is there? And they have all these formulas or whatever. They look at it on a national scale, right? And I think that once Idaho Falls hits about 75,000 people, Idaho Falls proper, we're gonna start seeing more businesses, more national brands, more national companies coming to Idaho Falls. Because it's gonna start showing up on the radar of all these companies who just use their algorithms and their formulas and whatever. When we hit 75,000 people, that's probably not gonna be for another five to seven years, just because our growth rate is pretty steady. But Idaho Falls does also have its, the INL, which is continually hiring. And the INL is Idaho National Laboratory. And there's some other companies going out there testing new modular reactors. And so that has steady growth of employment. Plus all Idaho Falls is a huge medical hub for southwestern Montana and western Wyoming. We have a lot of people that come to Idaho Falls for medical. So you have a lot of special T-doctors with everything here in Idaho Falls. And that growth is continuing. So my point is, is we're gonna have some steady growth there. But I think the big things, one of the main things I wanted to mention too, is that I-15 and US-20, they meet, you know, just right in Idaho Falls. And when it was built, that interchange, it was built in the 1960s, right?
Yeah.
And there was nothing, and you can tell, there was nothing here. For those of you that don't know, I-15 runs from, you know, Salt Lake up through East Idaho, all the way up to Montana. Well, after, once you go north of Idaho Falls, it's truly nothing. And it might as well just be southwest Montana. The rest of the population continues northeast on US-20. That's where you get up to Rigby, Rexburg, and then up to West Yellowstone or over to Jackson Hole. And so that's where a lot of the traffic is and quarters is. So when you have this, this interchange coming together, normally when people think of an interchange from highway to highway, it's a big, long ramp and you just merge on. Here, you get off and you stop at a stoplight. And it's very dangerous and it's definitely outlived its useful life, but it's time for a new one. So the Idaho Transportation Department and the City of Idaho Falls and Bonneville County, they're working on moving that interchange about a mile and a half north of Idaho Falls. Mile and a half, two miles north. And it'll be all this whole new interchange and then they're rerouting US-20. If you're wanting to live on the north side of Idaho Falls, just keep that in mind that that's going to be a project that we're gonna start seeing moving dirt within the next few years. So just keep that in mind. Now, some people might love it because it's gonna bring new opportunity, new businesses, more amenities there because you have that new traffic there. But others, locals, don't really like the idea of it because they, when they moved out there, it was country at the time. And now it's kind of changing out there. So there's definitely some differences there. We are starting to see Snickerlanding being continually built out and it's along the river there. So we're gonna see more shops and stuff there over time and more residential options. Not just apartments, but maybe condos, townhomes, or even smaller single-family homes. So there's gonna be some good options there.
Yeah, it's a good, it's like a lot of necessary growth. Like there are a lot of necessary changes. Like we just got a new water tower, which was in the works over the last several years. I mean, that was a plan that they've talked about, I think in the last, since 2015 or something like that.
Yeah. And it's finally gotten happened. We've got a new police headquarters, new fire station headquarters. The police headquarters, Idaho Falls has been, Idaho Falls Police has been sharing the sheriff's office and random other office buildings for the last, you know, 100 years. And now they finally get their own police department and that's all new. So we're starting to see proper like, okay, we are a bigger city now. We should actually have proper things.
Right. Yeah. Which is good. Like, I mean, cause you need those when we have, we have needs as a city, the people. So now let's talk about those, those pesky apartment buildings that are going up, that everybody's, you know, all up in arms about.
Yeah. So, you know, when people first see them, they think, oh, they're bringing all this traffic. There're gonna be crime, all this stuff. Those are all missed. Those are all further from the truth. The City of Idaho Falls has been really focused on what's called infill development, which is, okay, we have all this, you know, vacant land already surrounded by city roads, power sewer and everything. And it's not making any revenue. It's not making any money. And if anything, we're just, the city is just spending money on maintaining those lines that aren't going to anything. So they're focused on higher density infill projects. Because what those projects do is they actually generate a higher tax base. And they actually pay, not only pay for the maintenance of the services that go to that project, but they also pay for the services that go to existing single-family neighborhoods. And so the city is trying to fortify itself to where if we ever slow down growth, it has a good tax base that it can self-sustain itself. So the apartment buildings might scare a lot of people, but they're being put in strategic places. And they're put near amenities. So people aren't having to drive further from them. You know, single-family neighborhoods, they, they generate actually more traffic than an apartment building does. Yeah, you have a lot more cars coming in and out of that one spot. But a neighborhood on the edge of town has all those cars. They all have to drive and then they all have to drive into town on the same road to go get to a grocery store. So vehicle miles traveled is a lot higher with single-family neighborhoods. Now, I'm not saying the city is saying, no more single-family neighborhoods. That's very much the Idaho way of life. People want to live that way. But the city is also trying to focus on giving residents other options for resident, you know, for homes. So they have these new apartment buildings. They have the higher density condos that we're starting to see come in, which is great. More townhomes, twin homes of all price ranges. And what this is also doing is it is relieving the pressure off of existing single-family homes, which is helping it keep those single-family homes more affordable compared to other areas like maybe Bozeman or Jackson for sure, you know? Or even Teton County, Idaho, which has Driggs and Victor. So the city is strategically placing itself to make sure that, all right, we need to add higher density, not only to fortify ourselves with the taxes, to make sure we can still function as a city and not spread ourselves too thin, but also to help let the free market still do its thing while also city actually having, you know, impact to keep housing affordable.
Okay.
And so that's the focus there. You know, some people may still not like those apartments or they might be worried, are they gonna get filled or whatever? I mean, honestly, that's the developer's problem if they get filled or not. And if they don't, then will rents stabilize, you know? And then people have a chance to, you know, save money to buy a home or whatever. So that's something they're focused on. And also, when you focus on that high density, you're actually preserving farm ground. Idahoans, they love the wide open spaces, farm ground. And they have a deep connection to our agricultural roots, especially the locals that have been here a long time. And so if you want that, if they want that farm ground to stay and they don't want this large urban sprawl, then having the high density is actually crucial to make that happen. So we're not spreading out and we're actually focusing on our, on our core and strengthening the core of the city.
And I love that you mentioned condos too, because, you know, as realtors, we're biased and we think that.
People buy.
Yeah, we wanna help people buy because you're, instead of paying somebody else's mortgage, you could pay your own. And nobody, or not everybody needs a six-bedroom, three-bath house with a full basement.
Right on the edge of town.
Right. So creating condos creates like a two-bath or two-bed, one-bath.
Or two-bed, two-bath.
Yeah.
In a nice, three-story tall building, you own one unit. Some of those getting built brand new right now, next to a nice trail along our canals.
Yeah.
Yeah, those will be solid options for someone. If you're moving here, you're getting a job at the site, at the INL, and it's just you or, and you don't have any kids. We finally are gonna start having options where you can do that. And you're not pigeonholed into either, yeah, like you were saying, a big five-bedroom house on the edge of town or an apartment.
Yeah, that you have to rent.
That you have to rent. Yeah, there, there's starting to be more options with that. And we're starting to see more of that, which I'm very grateful of.
So it sounds like there's a lot of strategic planning, like the, the committee, the commission's not just acting willy-nilly. Like these are plans that have been going on for decades, for years, and they're continually talking about it. So it's not like it's just showing up all of a sudden.
Yeah.
Right? This is something that the public has been aware of for a long time. And there, some people are scared of it growing too much, turning into California. But like you said, it's a steady growth. It's not all of a sudden, we're getting millions of people. Yeah.
Exactly. And actually surprisingly, I was looking at the growth rate. So before COVID, we were all, we were still also about like a low 1% or high, you know, 0.8, 0.9% before COVID. And then after COVID, then 2020, 2021, we still only stayed in the ones. And so we've been actually pretty consistent before and after. But since about 2018, 2019, the City of Idaho Falls has been focusing their energy on these infill projects. But you know, those projects take time, but then a lot of them finally came to fruition right around the same time, 2022, 2023. So a lot of these apartment buildings did come up right around the same time. So people were like, what the heck?
Yeah.
But those plans were implemented long before, but now the demand finally met, you know, the need.
Yeah.
And so we're starting to see those things built. But the growth was already there. It's just looking different.
And growth is good for those of us that want things like, like we didn't have a Costco till like five or six years ago.
Like four years ago.
Or four, yeah, it was very recent. And we just got a tropical smoothie cafe and that's newer to town, which I really like. It's in Utah.
We now have two Culvers.
Yeah, yeah.
We're getting a Raising Canes.
Yeah. So like, I really want Trader Joe's or like a Nordstrom Rack. I think those would do well here, but they can't move here, like you said, until we have a certain amount of population. And so growth is good for those that are here who want more amenities. I moved here because I don't wanna live in a big city.
Right.
And I also don't want this to turn into a big city, but there are amenities that I also want.
Yeah. And Idaho Falls offers a great middle ground. And by focusing on its core and not spreading out, we're preserving that country lifestyle by not taking up all this farm ground.
Right.
And the city that's already a city, might as well just keep it a city. Like, who are we kidding? You know, you're a single-family home in the city, middle of the city, like you're not living in the country, you know? So it's like, let's, let's be purposeful about what we're doing. And cause if the city is growing, let's, you know, focus on the core and the center of the city and make it strong. And then all those people who live only 10 minutes outside of town on their, you know, five acres or whatever, they can continue that life.
Yeah, there's still a lot of that. I mean, even just five minutes down the road, right here, you can be in farmland.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we're, we're two minutes from the hospital and grocery stores. And then all of a sudden, five minutes, you're in like complete farmland. So there's still a lot of that here. And I think, and I always talk about that, how Rigby doesn't actually wanna grow. And so if you want to stay in the country, Rigby's only 20 minutes up the road.
Right, right up US-20, you know? And, you know, they're building all the new infrastructure to handle all the traffic and stuff for people who wanna come into Idaho Falls, who commute into Idaho Falls every single day. You know, it's funny, locals here think driving to Rigby or to Rexburg, like that seems like a whole nother world to people, like people who have lived here a long, long time. But we'd maybe get out-of-staters who are like, well, I used to commute, drive an hour one way.
Yeah.
So living in Rexburg only, you know, 35 minutes away from Idaho Falls, that's nothing, you know? And so there's definitely a shift going on with how people are approaching what that looks like and feels like. And so there's still those options to where if you wanna live out in the country, they're definitely still available.
And the commute's more palatable too, because you're not just stuck in traffic.
Yeah, that's a 20-minute drive because you're, because of the distance, not because of you're sitting in traffic.
Right.
Having said all that, the city, there are developers that are still putting in single-family neighborhoods, brand-new neighborhoods on the edge of town. So it is still slowly growing outwards, but the rate that it has grown outwards has slowed down because they're focusing on the center of the city.
Interesting. So that helps me and I hope, hopefully that helps everybody watching, like what's going on? What the heck is happening in Idaho Falls? Because a lot of like locals will kind of scream a little bit louder than the Planning and Zoning Commission. And some people get nervous, like, don't California or Idaho, poor California, they get thrown under the bus.
Yeah. If anything, I've actually seen more people move from Washington and Oregon here.
Yeah.
Than California, because our weather is colder than Boise. Now Boise, they're getting a lot of those Southern Californians and normal, you know, Central Californians. But yeah, here, I've actually mostly helped people from Washington and Oregon. Those people have always, they just want the live-out-in-the-country lifestyle. And so I wouldn't be too worried about the people moving here, because the people moving here want the Idaho lifestyle.
Right. So, yeah. The God, guns and freedom type of mentality, live and let live.
Yeah, for sure.
So is there anything else you would add in regards to why someone would want to move here? Just your personal opinion?
I think that if you like the outdoors and you like being close to world-renowned recreation and you want just a, a town that does what you need it to do, but you don't want that big city life, Idaho Falls is the place to be. And if you do wanna dabble in that big city life, Salt Lake and Boise aren't too far away.
Yeah.
And you can have a good mix of things here. Also, if you live here and your family lives somewhere else in the country, they might come visit you still all the time because you live really close to Yellowstone and the Tetons and everything. So they might use you as an excuse, like, oh, well, we can do it all in one trip or whatever. You see, see that a lot. So I don't know. I just think it's a great, great place to live. We're seeing growth, so it's, it's healthy. It's not stagnant. There is plentiful jobs to be had. Idaho Falls was actually one of the only cities in the entire region with the multiple states around that actually saw job growth in the first parts of COVID, when all these other cities didn't see, they saw job loss. And so Idaho Falls is very business-friendly. Yeah, there's lots of opportunity to be had here. So.
And just so they don't hear it just from me, because people hear it from me all the time and we're realtors. What do you think of the real estate market? Cause I feel like it's very, it's very healthy right now in East Idaho. I think buyers and sellers are winning. And there's some crazy things happening with some, you know, multiple offers. But for the most part, it's pretty like, it's doing really well. What do you think?
Yeah, the days of 2021 where every property is getting, you know, five offers, 20 grand over asking nonsense, that, those days are gone. We're seeing healthy price increases in some price categories. Some prices have stagnated a little bit over the last two years. But if you're not planning on selling, that's not a big deal. But overall, it, it hasn't dumped like everyone thinks it's gonna happen or drop or, you know, whatever. Just because of our very, very consistent and stable job market, which is the sites, which is government and all the medical jobs. You know, people are always getting sick, you know? And so this, it's very stable here and we don't see these crazy ups and downs. The craziest up and down we saw was, yeah, 2021, but that was happening all over the country. But since then, it's kind of stabilized. And I think, yeah, it, buyers and sellers for the most part are winning. Buyers are actually have options. They're not having to be hasty about their decisions. And sellers, they're still getting equity out of their home if they haven't bought super recently.
Right. Yeah. That's, that's the only downside I see is there's a few people that bought last year.
Or two years ago.
And I'm, I try to tell them, I'm sorry, you're not, you're gonna lose, you know, after fees and commissions and things. And, but some people just have to sell. So that's the only downside that I'm really seeing. There's a lot of buyers asking for closing costs and sellers agreeing to it.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of like mutual win-win situations.
Yeah, buyers are for sure able to start ask more nowadays than, you know, just three years ago. And so, you know, you hear of areas like Idaho Falls or whatever, and oh, those are the popular areas or Boise or whatever. They are, it's not a frenzy anymore. Like you can come here and feel like you have options. Now, it's definitely more expensive than it was six years ago, but that's the case across the whole country for the most part. But going back to what the city is doing, they're taking steps to help keep it affordable. So.
That's great. Well, thank you so much for allowing me to interview you and getting your opinion on. That's great. Well, thank you so much for allowing me to interview you and getting your opinion on, on Idaho Falls. And I'm excited to hear more about it and from you in the future.
Absolutely. Well, thanks for having me.
Yeah, of course.